Okay, welcome back to our county commission meeting. This is Matters by the Public. I'm going to ask you that when you are addressing the commission that you state your name, step up to the rostrum of the podium and state your name for the record and your address. Any person making impertinent or slanderous remarks or who becomes boisterous while addressing the commission shall be barred from further audience before the commission by the presiding officer, which is me, unless permission is to continue or again address the commission as granted by majority of the commission members present. I ask you to please restrict your comments to three minutes and please be polite and we will be very happy to listen to what you have to say. That being said, we have, I believe, nine cards today, so that means we'll be here for probably about 45 minutes, so we're very happy to hear you. And our first guest is?
Our first guest mayor is Jesse Walters, followed by KJ Meckert.
Okay, please state your name.
My name's Jesse Walters. I live at 2939 Hope Valley Street, number 306 in West Palm Beach. Excuse me. I apologize for taking up the time of the whole commission with this issue, but I've contacted my commissioner several times about it without any response. I and some of my neighbors are concerned about the condition of the median along Jog Road from Okeechobee Boulevard north to just beyond Vista Parkway North. It was ripped apart over a year ago and then worked suddenly abandoned. There's rebar sticking out of the soil, piles of crushed stones and cement, a great deal of trash, and it no longer receives landscaping attention, little plastic flags and weeds that are two feet high. It's unsightly, and someone, either the county or some other agency, has abandoned it. I've placed about a dozen phone calls to various county agencies and sent emails over 14 months seeking help to no avail. I'm hoping that by bringing this to the attention of the full county commission, someone will help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rutter, would you please discuss the issue with this and perhaps we can have Mr. Rick's follow-up with him? Thank you very much, and thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Mayor, following KJ, we'll have Chuck Lynch, then I think it's Todd Buffington.
You are recognized for three minutes.
Good afternoon. There are several of us here today to express concerns regarding the Palm Beach County election system's security and vulnerabilities. We are addressing the county commission as the governing body that approves the budget for the procurement of election systems. Frankly, citizens have lost faith in our election system. An ABC poll earlier this year stated only 20% of the public has faith in our election systems. Only 30% of Democrats and 13% of Republicans express strong confidence in our election systems. To restore confidence, we believe election tabulation should be conducted at the precinct level with a hand count, which is then reported up to the county. Until Palm Beach County does away with vulnerable election systems, we have an interim proposal to present to you today to ensure free and fair elections in November. I'll speak briefly to some election equipment vulnerabilities. I have in my hand a network diagram from the ESNS company, and I've highlighted and documented and read various areas of vulnerability. You can see there's a lot of writing there. In reference to the machines at the polling stations, when a voter first comes in the polling station, the EVID machine is the first machine they encounter. That EVID machine is on a wireless connection throughout the day, so take note of that. The other two machines in the polling station are the Express Vote, where if a voter elects to vote on an electronic ballot, they can do that, or the DS 200. Both of these machines have USB ports as well as potential Bluetooth and wireless connectivity. Why is this important? Well, again, that EVID machine has a wireless connection, so if these machines have the ability to go wireless, they can piggyback onto that wireless connection. Additionally, with the USB ports, every morning, a USB drive is inserted into those machines. And is it possible that those USB drives have a pre-programmed or predetermined outcome of the election? And the answer to that is absolutely yes. It is very difficult to find an independently performed security evaluations for the ESNS systems used in Palm Beach County. One of the few we could find was performed at the University of Pennsylvania. In 2008, they did an in-depth review of 670,000 lines of code in an ESNS machine. One should first ask why a computer that simply has to count votes has 670,000 lines of code. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Following Todd, is it Buffington? Did I get that right?
Chuck Lynch.
Sorry, Chuck Lynch, and then Todd, and then Jeff Bonji.
255 Northeast 3rd Avenue in Delray Beach. So continuing on from KJ, we found numerous exploitable vulnerabilities in nearly every component of the ESNS systems. These vulnerabilities enable attacks that could alter or forge precinct results, install corrupt firmware, and erase audit records. Our analysis focused on architectural issues that can lead to systemic vulnerabilities that do not appear easily countered with election procedures or software updates. Virtually every mechanism for assuring the integrity of precincts' results for protecting the backend tallying system can be circumvented. Election results can be tampered with in the ESNS system by exploiting any number of different vulnerabilities that were discovered. The normal access provided to precinct poll workers is sufficient to conduct attacks that alter countywide election results that in some cases cannot be detected or recovered through audits or recounts. Perhaps more importantly, we show how the interaction of the various software and hardware modules leads to systemic vulnerabilities that can spread throughout the system. There's a strong potential for practical attacks that propagate virally from the field back to the county election management system. That is, a single circumvented piece of precinct hardware, such as a memory card returned from precinct for vote tallying, can effectively take over the countywide backend tallying system, alter countywide results reported in the current election, and then corrupt the installed firmware of additional precinct hardware in subsequent elections. While we presume there have been many upgrades to the software and hardware since then, how can we know without independent evaluation that these major security issues are not still present? In 2019, there was a report about two students at the University of Michigan Computer Science Department that were able to code a simple patch using 398 lines of code for commonly-used election tabulator machines that could take the Oval infill for one candidate on one ballot and switch it to another candidate while simultaneously creating the digital ballot image to match. The change was made before the ballot image is stored and before it was tabulated. This simple software program kept a running total of the real ballot results and was capable of changing just enough ballots and corresponding digital images to achieve the desired result so as to not raise alarm bells. Matthew Bernard was involved in creating the program. He is now a researcher at Voting Works. The Center for Democracy and Technology created Voting Works in 2018. CDT's major donors are George Soros', Open Society Foundation, Google, Facebook, and Amazon.
Okay, your time has expired.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Following Todd, we'll have Jeff Bonji, and then Cindy Falco de Corado.
Just to clarify, the first portion of Chuck's speech was about the findings from the Pennsylvania study. So we didn't find that, but the Computer Science Department at University of Pennsylvania did.
Thank you.
So I'm Todd Buffington, 235 Russell Drive, West Palm Beach, and I would like to cover some of the suspicious results from recent elections. A pattern recognition expert from South Carolina has analyzed cast vote records for recent races in various states and counties, including Palm Beach, and has found virtually conclusive evidence of an algorithm that begins adding to a chosen candidate's votes as more people vote in every precinct. Now, this is not simply occurring in the aggregate. It is shown to happen, on average, in every precinct. This is not, as a number of people voting in each precinct goes up, so does the percentage of votes for that candidate. So it's not just the number of votes going up, it's the percentage that gradually climbs as more people vote. Normally, with the law of large numbers, the average would be established and go up and down a little bit, to some degree, around the mean. However, he sees again and again, in many different races, that the slope for the winning candidate is an upward sloping line. In fact, in the August Democrat primary in our own District 23, the chart, this one here, for the winning candidate, Jaren Muskowitz, is well outside the 99.9% confidence interval. In other words, there is a .1% chance that these results occurred naturally. In addition, in analyzing official results data from the 2020 election, as published in the New York Times, it is clear that the results presented were the result of an algorithm and in no way could have occurred organically. We found newly-reported results to be overwritten with the same exact percentage that the candidates had in the total votes. In addition, many back-to-back results had the same exact percentages for the candidates, no matter how many decimal points were used. This is another statistical impossibility. While using this method to hold the results in place, high percentage counts for Biden were mixed in to slowly move the total percentage in his favor. We saw the same patterns in every swing state and in Florida. In fact, the total vote percentage was moving extremely close to Biden winning. We believe results having to be in by midnight stopped Florida from being converted to a win for Biden. This could only be accomplished if machines are complicit in some way. Note the end of the results, where there are 21, no, 22 counts that are the exact same percentages for Biden and Trump. 51% for Trump, 48.3% for Biden. The orange are high percentage count for Biden, the other yellow are all matching results, obviously set by an algorithm. We ask that you end the use of machines until we know more, or at a minimum, hold a hearing to prove that no interference occurred in our prior elections and that the voting system is secure. We have questions.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Following Jeff, we'll have Cindy, and then Patty Testa.
Hello all, my name's Jeff Bonjorno, 3851 North Ocean Boulevard, Gulfstream, Florida. And I served with 40 state legislators on what's called the Election Integrity Caucus, and we went through a lot of the laws that were passed over the last four years, and also, we lined them up with the anomalies that the group just spoke about. Now, I'm a tech expert, I have over 100 IT certifications, I own a Microsoft, what's called an independent software vendor consultancy, so I do consider myself an expert in the field. And I recently ran for Congress against Brian Mast in the 22nd District of Florida, and I experienced firsthand many roadblocks and some loose laws that were passed in Tallahassee. And basically, lining up with the problems and the gaps that were just mentioned, they pretty much provide the perfect storm and the ability to swing and throw elections. Now, a lot of the technology that, I don't want to get too technical, but there's one blaring gap that we have on the server end, and this is, no one talks about this, you're not going to read about it anywhere, it's called integrated lights out. Now, what does that mean? It means that I can perform remote service on a PC that's either off, or I could bypass the operating system entirely and throw scripts, do certain things, and there are no logs. So what we hear that these systems aren't connected to the internet, we know they are, we know there's huge gaps, and we have laws that Tallahassee passed, 98.09812A. It says that if there's anywhere between 1 and 29 votes in any contest cast in any precinct, that the supervisor of elections, they don't have to report the detail for the entire line item, which makes it basically impossible to ever do an audit. This will be reversed engineered because we don't have the numbers to compare it to. So there's other laws that are suspicious, 101.015 is another one where chain of custody. I asked Wendy Satori Link to, if we could have someone present the entire time that the manhunt ballots were present, she denied the request. So there's lack of transparency with reporting, there's lack of transparency with oversight pertaining to chain of custody, and with that, I believe that we're asking you to basically defund the machines going forward and allow us manual votes, manual count of the votes at the precinct level. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Following Cindy, we'll have Patty Testa, followed by Linda Smith.
Hi, I'm Cindy Falco de Corado. It's nice to see everybody's faces. Yes, I can see smiles on you. Thank you very much for showing them. I do have a few questions for you. Do we, excuse me, have the machines been properly certified? I ask this because I had went into, when they had an open house at the voter's registration in Riviera Beach where they housed the ballots, and as I did a walkthrough, it was quite interesting that the wrong date was on one of the machines, and it was brought to Wendy Link's attention, and she had a gentleman that actually worked that machine, and so she said, then the date's wrong. He goes, oh, no problem. He reached his hand in the back and he changed the number. If it's that easy to do right before our very eyes, who's to say what they're doing, as it was presented to you through a computer technology explanation, which I'm not technological, that word's a little bit rough for me, but if it was done manually as well, who's to say our votes, our apps are correct? I ran for mayor, and I was told that there were 30,000 ballots that were incorrect. So we know there's fraudulency. We know these machines do with the algorithms, and they make up their own numbers. I believe that even everyone on the dais knows that those machines are not correct. I do have another question, several others for you, because we have to get down to the bottom of this. We will never have fair elections as long as we have these machines. We need to go back to hand ballots, we need to go back to people in precincts doing hands-on. That's the only way this is going to work, and each one of you have ran for office, so you're going to see it again when you run for office again, Mr. Weiss and some of the others that are running. It's criminal. This is criminal, okay? So my next question to you is, have all 670,000 or so machines been calculated? Have they been reviewed? These are questions to ask yourself and to ask Wendy Link. This is imperative. This is about our lives. This is about us, we the people, making a decision, voting, and having our votes respected and honored. Do you have, see our codes in the Easy Vote machines, and are they trustworthy? How do you know? Has there been calculations? Has the work been done, which we know many countries, many cities, especially up in, I think, Arizona, where we've calculated, we've seen that these things are not correct? This is crimes, again, against we the people. We have a right to vote, and we have a right to vote with our vote being accepted as is without a computer changing the numbers. It's got to stop. You have the budget, you can withdraw the budget, I know that you don't have the full course over charge of this situation, but we have crimes right here that the people are not getting their votes added correctly and the proper number for their voting, and we're getting people in office that we did not vote for nor elect. And when you run for office, you'll find that for yourselves, and you'll be quite frustrated to find out that maybe you didn't win because of the algorithms.
Your time has expired. Thank you so much.
Following Patty Testa, we'll have Linda Smith, and then Fain Lowesman.
Hi, I'm Patty Testa from Jupiter, Florida.
Can you just give your microphone a little tug-down? Thank you.
Like that?
Yeah, perfect.
I don't want you to miss any of this. In October of 2021, I talked to you to end the automatic reinstatement of a mandatory countywide mask ordinance. Without science, I was forced to comply or deny the right to speak to you in person right in here on the record. I was obedient, morally intimidated, and humiliated, playing dress-up to come here. I walked out after speaking because I was not putting it back on. The group had blind allegiance to experts without investigation into the science and to experts who received a stream of financial incentives. The group enforced compliance without humanitarian responsibility to the families and the elderly and the children. The group thing failed, and the lack of individual accountability created an unwelcome psychosocial environment for me. Since that day, I was denied or rejected, ejected from three mammograms, three primary care, three cardiology, two dentists, three Quests, and one eye doctor because I refused to wear a mask. Security guards escorted me out twice, one stating he would continue to deny my care if I continued to refuse a mask. The Jupiter police responded once with two police cars because I refused to wear a mask. All of this and every day, your decisions have consequences. Each of us has a story, each of us know a child, each of us know of a death, each of us has been coerced to comply. Why do people think that just because they forget how they damaged you, that you should forget that you were damaged, and how you were damaged, and by whom you were damaged, and how you remain damaged? In July, I told you about an election integrity project, and Kathy Quinneville came, and others reported on problems, lawsuits, illegal activity, and documented irregularities with machines acquired by SOE Link with outside funding. The ball was rolling, and this group did nothing when SOE Link refused the will of the people. This group agreed to pay for live streaming after hearing all the information and proof brought forward, but this group defaulted to SOE Link, just like the canvassing board does. The SOE refused live streaming. I was at the SOE Tabulation Center during the primaries, someone watched every day. I thought you would all be there, saying hello to the public that was there. After all, you control the purse strings. Today, as a citizen of Palm Beach County, I say it is your duty to stop all funding related to the unsecure voting systems SOE Link obtained with illegal funding. Stop paying for the expanded SOE center area to house machines, the expanded SOE center area to operate the machines, electricity for all the machines related to expansions, electricity that services the machines, all maintenance plans for anything related to the machines, the army of technicians to service the machines, the massive quantity of assorted office supplies to run sorter scanners, duplicators, openers, and tabulators, miles and miles of electrical cords and communication wires, cameras supplied by the SOE, and campaign materials of SOE Wendy Satori Link plastered on every flat surface and giveaway. You forget how you damaged me. I want to, but I just can't forget that I was damaged because of your choices. This group used power when you forced me to wear a mask, refused to intervene with live streaming by helping the people with the next steps to achieve the will of the people, and refused to intervene-
Okay, your time has expired. Thank you very much for your remarks.
I have three more sentences. Can I please finish?
We're done.
You are done. Thank you very much.
Following Linda Smith, we'll have Fain Lowesman.
Hello, Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida. I'm here to speak a little bit about electric vehicles-
Linda, get a little closer to the microphone.
Oh, gosh. I'm here to speak a little bit about electric vehicles. I've spoken before in the past. The faster the public and the county transitions, the better to not only save on our carbon footprint, but also our tax dollars. According to the TPA Governing Board meeting in June of 2022, for a combustion engine, it's about 20 cents per mile versus 3 cents per mile electric. This is money everyone, everyone, can save. I have seen even higher numbers than this. Campaigns like Dump the Pump and Bike to Work Week just aren't enough. We need to encourage, dare I say subsidize, individuals' efforts to go green and to transition. We need more infrastructure. We have been hearing a lot about workforce housing lately. This type of housing will need charging stations. You might say people that qualify for this type of housing can't afford electric vehicles. I believe they are the people who actually need the electric vehicles the most to save on fuel costs. The federal inflation reduction bill has money for EV infrastructure. I hope you and your staff are actively pursuing these federal dollars. If we don't get out in front of recharging stations, I'm afraid I envision extension cords stretching across parking lots near you. Palm Beach Gardens code enforcement vehicles are all electric. What is Palm Beach County doing? Six electric buses for Palm Tran? I don't know. Think about electric vehicles at school, parent pickup lines. These lines are currently filled with toxic fumes, which small children are forced to stand near, and they are more susceptible to fumes than adults. More on affordable housing. For years, decades, developers have been buying out their required affordable housing requirements, and now, I understand, developers want taxpayers to pay for that. I'm not sure what alternative universe that might sound right, but we do need affordable housing, we need it soon, and it needs to be done correctly as far as energy efficiency and with electric charging stations. If I had another three minutes, I would talk about trying to stop sugarcane burning, which is killing a number of people out west in our county. There are statistics that one out of six was discussed premature deaths happen because of sugarcane burning, and I think that was through a FAU study. There was an article in the Palm Beach Post, I suggest you read it. I would also like to talk about reducing single-use plastics. There is going to be a solid waste conference, October 21st, where attendees will learn that aluminum is much more cost-effective to recycle than plastic bottles. I would encourage you to put aluminum bottles in all Palm Beach County vending machines. And I ask you to please read Sandra Levine's comment that she sent in.
Thank you, Linda. We appreciate your comments.
Following Fain Lowesman, our final speaker will be Meredith Hope.
Fain Lowesman, 5301 North Ocean Drive. I have a handout copy for all the elected officials and Ms. Baker. By the way, let's start at the beginning with the First Amendment. Your rules are unconstitutional as applied to general public comment. If somebody is making slanderous remarks, it's not for you to determine what they are. If somebody's making an impertinent remark during an agenda item where you're talking about building a road and they're talking about single-use plastic, you can have that person removed for disorderly conduct, or you can have them removed if they go beyond three minutes, but that decision has to be made by that corporal right there. He has to make a decision of this probable cause. You cannot direct a police officer to do anything unless there's disorderly conduct being done by the speaker. So your behavior at the last meeting was reprehensible, trying to censure my content. You cannot do that. Okay? If you don't like what I have to say, tough. Now, let's go over what the facts were at the last meeting. The facts of the last meeting were, we were talking about Dave Aronberg. Those transcripts were sealed 90 days after Lynn Aronberg's first deposition and 24 days after the second deposition. So people that were present at that deposition could talk about what happened. That's how it got over to the Palm Beach State Attorney's Office, that's how it got to the media, that's how it got to the Broward State Attorney's Office. So those, the information that took place there, the parties talked about it for three months, and then for another 24 days. Then it was sealed. Why would it be sealed? Because the reporter asked for a hard copy of the deposition transcripts on a public records request, and when they said, oh, my God, what's in there, then they went running and sealed it up. Okay? We know what's in there because the people who were present talked about it. That's number one. Number two, contrary to Ms. McKinley's comments, Lynn Aronberg never talked to the media. She never smeared him. She raised her right hand to tell the truth, and that's what happened during those depositions. I would like one of you who has some courage to ask, send a letter to Governor DeSantis and ask him to do an investigation into Dave Aronberg. Let's forget about Lynn Aronberg for a minute, let's talk about what he did to me. He corruptly prosecuted me for three phony charges just to teach me a lesson because I exposed corruption in an investigation in his public corruption unit involving Jeffrey Gagnon, Julia Botell, and the black chief building official in Riviera Beach, Lady March Goldwire. They did a four-month investigation. I went down and gave a taped recorded statement, three other witnesses did, we provided evidence, a probable cause affidavit was prepared by his office, and he went in there and pulled that all out and made it disappear as a political favor for, we believe, Botell. Okay? That's corruption. You cannot do that. You can't destroy official documents. Okay? We have laid that all out. So I know what he's done to me, I know what he did to Lady March Goldwire, the political favor for the developer of the Amber, I know what kind of guy Aronberg is. I want to get rid of him.
Thank you very much for your comments.
And our final speaker, Mr. Mayor, is Meredith Hope.
Hi, I'm Meredith Hope. I'm from Palm Beach, Florida, and I want to thank you all for all listening to our concerns about the election today, and I could see by your faces that you absorbed the information, and your light bulbs went off, as you are responsible for this county and making sure we're legitimate. I've lived in Africa and other countries where people don't have the right to vote. There is no freedom, and what sets America apart from the rest of the world is the freedom that we possess here, that we have the right to vote and we can choose the people that we have in office. And I wanted to ask you, has there been a ruling by the county attorney on the powers of this commission as they relate to the election system? And have they ruled on the legal- And have they ruled on the legal jurisdiction of the county commissioners to override any of the SOE hand counts? Now, there is laws within Florida where we can do a random hand count, and with that random hand count, we could almost make it like a lottery. In each precinct, we take a random, unbeknownst beforehand, election and do a hand count in that precinct. And that would, you know, because we're talking about being very close to an election here, and we're being presented with a very large problem, and we could do a hand count of, you know, a single race at a single precinct and verify the data and know that we're doing something legitimate. And if the machines cannot be removed, because we do, we're talking about November here, before the midterm elections, then we need to have a hand count of the paper ballots. And maybe we can't count all of them, but we can choose a random per precinct election and count that, and make sure it's not known beforehand for every precinct on the election night, and compare those results with the tape of the DS 2000 machine, excuse me, the DS 200 tabulators. The future of our nation, the freedom of our people, what sets us apart from the rest of the world, really depends on what we do on the local level, and I implore you to help and make sure that we have free and fair elections. And I want to thank you all for your time today.
Thank you very much. We thank everybody for their comments today, and we thank you for the civility of your comments, and with that, we are adjourned.